Did I have a motion that the minutes from December 11th be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All the flavors say aye? Give the police report, Chief Harrison.
For the month of December, we had four or five calls, thirty-eight traffic stops, nine traffic accidents, ten murders, which always was all, uh, seven domestics. Had a hundred and seven calls where they actually went to police come to the residence. Five people were arrested. There was three thousand eight hundred ninety-two miles to go.
Anybody got any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you, Chief Harrison. Fire Department Chief Gary Young, give your report, please.
Let me tell you, I want to catch up on the last one real quick. November, we answered twenty-nine calls, seven were EMS calls. The city had nine of the twenty-nine, it was only two of the nine paid. But the city paid a set of forty. And I'm thinking last week, we had a blowout in engine two at Lakeland Station. But I had some used, good-used tires stopped high at the can of garden, used those. So we did that for just a cost of labor, painting out the tires. December, had twenty-four calls, four were EMS. The city had eight of the twenty-four and four of the eight paid. City's paid for that one for a thousand dollars either. Vehicle repairs, I don't think going on, I'll tell you, we had the annual DOT inspection of all the trucks in the county. So as far as Lakeland Station, Lakeland engine one and engine two had no issues. But there's tanker three, only issue with it was a loose air line. So all three of the trucks were DOT inspected and ready for another year on that part. And basically, that's about it. That's all. That's it for Lakeland Station. Any question? Thanks.
Appreciate another good year, Fire Department, all the volunteers.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What are you talking about, paid and not paid? What is?
Uh, explain it.
None of the calls we go on pay. Like I said, the city had eight calls. There was eight calls in the city. And on the four of the eight calls paid.
So the city charges, you got a fire department, call them?
No, this is what, this is, is the, uh, this is what the city pays the firemen for their response. They're, they're salary. They get twenty dollars per call, but not every call will pay. Only four of those had to pay.
They didn't have to. Maybe they got there and wanted nothing to do with it. Tell them, you know, if they find a fire, they get paid, if they just go.
Now, maybe they were charging you. People had, ah.
No, 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 this is the salary over the city.
Okay, thank you, chief. Fire Department Fortune Report, Mayor Proctor.
Yes, sir, the city's, uh, the amount of the basic, uh, fine was five thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars, and the city's portion is three thousand three hundred fifteen dollars fifty-four cents.
Sanitation report, Grayson Mack. Okay. We've got several things on sanitation, whether y'all want you to look at. Everybody got copies of the trucks?
No, sir, I didn't have a copy of all of them.
Okay.
Just so much to explain them.
Okay, have they got any of the truck copies?
Yes.
None of them?
Yes.
Okay. New truck, one, uh, is like so, you can see how a new truck looks best right and left. They run about two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. He's got one that, he's got four thousand miles on it demonstrating he cut three thousand miles off and all. I told you, we were more interested in, in the use. So what they've done, they have found us some used trucks here. And, uh, well, there's one that's got five thousand dollars, he'd say two-thirty-eight, but, you know. Okay. Here's a truck with seventy-two thousand miles on it. It's dual-brined, there's a joystick, it's got a twenty-eight-yard body, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. It's an auto car. Well, auto cars, to me, is hard to get serviced. And let's look at that. Here is, is one that can be serviced and by a laster. A Cummins engine, Allison transmission. Here's an old-five Teterbilt, Big Bill's type truck, we have a body now, it's got a HEI body, H-E-I-L, that's what we've got now. We've had great luck with it. This truck here is oh-five, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand far. Just some pictures of it. Let's have them down, look at that. That's just a big one. Yeah, it's about twenty, I think ours was twenty-eight, now we've gone to thirty-two. All right, Diane, you had to tell me, what's the picture? What we got two pictures of?
That's across the street.
What we got?
Billy's painting a studio pride.
Yeah. Why we got two pictures?
That's what George Power gave Billy.
These two?
That's what the pole should look like.
Okay, I thought that'd been resolved.
I wasn't sure it had, had it.
Oh, okay, yeah. Back in nineteen, around nineteen eighty-two, they put a pump right over here in the old buddy Carter, Ida Carter House, syrup pump. Since that time, there's probably five or six of them now. Billy was supposed to be here tonight, he was gonna tell you all about every one of them, but, uh, the council and the mayor, before I got mayor, voted that everybody would have to pay for their own pumps and hook it to their house. Because the basic meter would cost us more than we pay, than we charge for the basic sewer. Don, you remember that, Otis, you remember that?
The only one the city didn't pay for was when I begged for it, right?
All right. So over the years, it's been disconnected. And I'd show you, George Power did away with it, and they, they would not hook back up to it. And, and I told them that our policy now was that they could run a wire to the house and took it up. And they said it cost about a hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. And I said, well, I still think that's your, your expense, my house, because we've got all these other people that's paying for their own. And we've been doing that. I know before I became mayor, so eighty-nine years, we've been, everybody's been paying for ours, is that correct?
Yeah, all for a location, yes, and put it in that.
All right. When we look at the city charter, the city charter says that everybody's supposed to come to the city, like, to the street. Anything done between the street and the house is responsibility of the homeowner. That way, y'all understand it. Don, you follow me? So anyway, Jimmy Flair was gonna hook it up, and he asked him, would the city pay a hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars or something? And I said, don't think so. But I said, I will tell the council about it, but we hadn't paid for anybody else. And as far as I know, they hooked it up, haven't they? It does it to the house.
It's hooked up. Don, it's hooked to the pole.
It hooked to the pole. Well, all that, George Power couldn't lose from that, but.
No, no, it went back and hooked back to the bill.
Huh?
We just had it, and then we had it went back and hooked back to it.
They did it?
Yeah, whether they put another meter in, whether he had, Don, hooked back to it on the pole.
All right, who's paying the bill?
Don, none of them.
We're not going to?
Don't know, I, uh, my understanding was that Jimmy said if the city would pay for the cost of the material and all, that when he disconnected from the power pole out there, he would connect it back to the house.
Oh.
And see, we done, we done bought the city, done bought one company, put it there. All the way through. Cause once they had in there, Gary Young, he could tell you they couldn't rebuild. He took one of the bikes.
Well, two of the council members, been here a long time, remember when the council changed the policies and all that?
Like I said, the only reason that was put in here because it could not hook any sewer up, because it was in the valley.
Was it ready to flow?
Yeah, and I thought, but Carter's in pain for that.
It's time to calm right there, stand and put it in.
Y'all had a grant, didn't you, Don?
No.
And all that.
That could pump, so the sewer wouldn't go anymore, because it was out in the hill and you couldn't come up here. So they put it there to, uh, could have pumped out the sewer line.
Wasn't ready to flow?
Right. It wouldn't flow because it was in, down in the hill, we got it to go.
But they were supposed to pay for the black bill?
As far as I know, they paid for it. The whole time that Buddy Carter's been out there, as far as I know, they paid for it.
Who?
Buddy Carter, well, the Michael Carter one.
I think the city paid for that for a while.
But I don't know.
By the time when we first put it in. They had paid for it since you've been here the other day, Diane. I know, they had paid for it, I know, in about five or six years.
I know they hadn't had no sewer a long time over there.
Why is this not just a problem?
Why is this a problem now?
So the little pump that's in there was tore up, and the vines and all, it got around the, the meter, and choked the neutral out, or line going up to the meter base and all. And so they, they, somebody had moved in there, and they were having to use the sewer. And so, couldn't find out, it went pumping back to the man.
So nobody had.
And so they went down there and checked it out, that's what had happened. It'd been like that for a long time. It had just happened.
Nobody had really lived over there.
No, not really. It's been a long time, several years.
Several years.
Yeah.
You have one or two people have it, Diane?
That's the second.
That's the second people that's lived.
One year.
See, I don't, uh, I don't have any problems.
This is not the same. I don't have that break out right here?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was having problems too, recently, moved out.
Is that what those pictures are? That's George Power gave you?
That's the hook of it, the power cutter.
I read it, uh, the brakes just don't fly.
All right.
That's an old, old, I think, old block.
That's a new, that's the old thing on it, everybody, they showed you those.
That's back at the house?
I believe so. No, that's a silent type, old shit right out here.
That's a silent.
Yeah, Mary said that one was breaking in front of you. You do up there and do it?
Mr. Connor. Mr. Connor, Mr. Connor, no!
Yeah, the old car.
That was okay.
Okay. Way back.
Here, that's the pole. That's a service pole, it's on about there.
The house, they bought them back.
I've been on, like, a house somewhere?
Yeah.
Really?
No, that's, that's some weird.
That's not it. She said that's not it.
I know.
Huh? Oh, my bad. That's some medical, that. Diane, you want to put all that?
Billy gave me, said George Power gave him.
Yeah, well, we go ahead and hook one into this house anyway.
The way I understood it is that's the way.
No, he just, they just, they almost broke it, they, they.
The way it should be. The way your pole should be.
The breakdown, they shook it, they don't draw, they don't chill real.
Yeah, they understand all the plans, the double measures.
Yeah, that's what the house said.
What's your answer? Pretty hard, so what you all right?
All right, we're going, we're going in.
Yeah, we're doing it.
Okay, down on the new lift station. Uh, this is the first in Lakeland, it's, it's new, it's been out several years. I called and talked to, uh, a couple of horses, he called and phoned me, and I talked to them, and salesmen came in. You'll find this picture in your packet. All right. What this does, this is a system that, in your lift station, it's a big old round pipe, and water's in there, and floats in there, and grease gets in there. And grease gets up, and it forms cakes and gets hard. This is a new system that will disperse the grease. It'll keep the city from having to buy expensive chemicals and pour into the sewer system in that area. That right there.
You corrected that.
And with the school over there, uh, you know, we get a lot smarter grease. All food has grease in it. The, the school not greasy now, don't get out, don't be wrong now, but it, it produces grease. And we were having a problem there, we, we had to do it. But I thought this would be interesting for the council to see this, this new deal. And there's a picture of how it looks installed. The back picture back here, you'll turn it back here. This is the tank that's buried in the dirt. And this is a new system, it's something that, that we should be proud of, that we've got, and is environmentally safe. Instead of putting strong toxic chemicals in there, we won't have to do it, just the water will disperse it itself.
Wait, we got a next one right there, there's a school, there's a school.
Get right down here by fire station. Gary, did you see that installed?
I didn't, not that current.
Okay, the engineer came here last week, they ran a test on it, it worked beautifully, he said. It operated real well. Now, they had to put it online, there hasn't been?
No, we got to put the full spray and all up on it, then it will be put online. Once we disconnect the old system, and then that new system we put on line.
Okay.
Might be, it might happen next week.
Okay.
I got two gears sewer reflectors fire station.
Also, I know the light doesn't burn in the park anymore at night.
And I hope they're setting the button to. Yeah, I think Power kept them hooked lately. You looking at Power off the pole? Or you took your pines down, down there?
Yeah.
And I would like to be hooked like this, so I had to break that line and take it.
Okay, we need to make sure that's, put back a little park, real, real dark looking down there. City of Lakeland Water and Sewer Report, Grayson, that's what I was talking about. You got anything on water, any complaints you've heard, sewer stuff? Street Department, uh, Jerry Grayson?
And, and also street will do about a full stop for the, uh, we didn't finish there. If that's a city, that place and all, and all this.
Okay, in, in the morning, provided it's not raining, doesn't happen. They'll be back on Boston Street, and on Pearl Street, and the streets in between, paid. I was very dissatisfied with the job that the contractor did to attach it. And I went back for them with the engineer and with the contractor. So last Thursday, he offered the city a deal, and I was discussing this with Don, and I went, about, mentioned Otis too. It was a thing on the spot, and I accepted it. He took ten thousand dollars off his contract. And Tony, we didn't expect to get nothing, did we?
No.
Didn't expect to get anything. We got ten thousand dollars back.
Because they, they, they.
They were, they were rough, rough and bad, and we in there having to repay them. So I thought, I was proud to get ten thousand dollars back, so. We used that ten thousand dollars toward repaying those streets. So I didn't call the council meeting to do that, but I thought all y'all really be real happy to do that, but we didn't accept nothing to get anything. Municipal report, Otis, you got anything there?
Our business license is coming in pretty good again, we moved it, and we have closed out our two thousand and twelve budget, and all our accounts have gone.
Okay, good. All right, number six, two thousand and thirteen municipal election qualifying fees. The fees, according to the charter, have to be charged on what we make in that present, not on what you'll make in the next term. As you know, the next term, what the mayor and council pay will go up. So I have a motion that we set the mayor's qualifying fee seventy, and the council qualifying fee at thirty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? All the flavors say aye? The point, City of Lakeland's department heads down here, uh, y'all want to do it all together, y'all want to do them one at a time?
We're going to do them all together.
Okay. Down on Mayor Proctor. What y'all want to do there, what's your pleasure?
Absolutely, you go there, you get the rest.
Grayson, is that all I do, Don? Okay. So if you would, write in there, Tony Giddens name. Okay, do I have a motion that George Lynn, City Attorney, John Delby Strickland, Municipal Court Judge, Diane Westbury, City Clerk and Finance Officer, Jeff Harrison, Chief of Police, been the hustler, public works superintendent, Mayor Proctor, Tony Giddens. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, any lyes? Okay, carry. All right, approved of two thousand and twelve accounts payable. Let me call your attention to one chick in there for seventy, seventy-six hundred dollars? Okay, it's a grant. We had a ten thousand dollar grant to, uh, spray and cut out plants down on Simpson Lector Trail. And the young man gave us a bid of ten thousand, and he did the work, and he came back, and he said seventy-six hundred dollars. And also, we talked with the Seven Rivers where we got our grant from, and they said it's a good possibility we might come back in and redo some more work, uh, and use the other twenty-four hundred dollars. So that seventy-six hundred dollars you send there a check, and we have already received the check before we wrote this check. The money was in our hand before we paid the individual. They actually had, from the U.S. Forest Service, had to come and approve the job. And once the U.S. Forest Service approved the job, Seven Rivers sent us a check. Okay?
Well, we talked about the Southern Trail, if we don't do Southern, that, Bush is gonna take it over.
The, uh.
The Lake, Lake, I was looking at it, because we don't, that stuff is growing in the early.
You talking about the?
Lake itself.
You talking about the house?
House, taking over, everything up there.
False theory, Lord, we, we, we going free, remember, you talked to him about it?
Yeah, I've talked a bit about it. It's, it's growing in the early. I think we still got cameras, not a bit.
See, if you let, like, it's coating now, maybe, I don't know if we're gonna get any cover, I probably will, around January, February, you know, last January. But once that coating gets some good, then you go over that spray, then it's gone, everything. I mean, in a couple of days. I ain't going there now spraying it, you know, the green was now going, I'd kill overnight, turn brown. But that root system, when you got these, sort of work on.
The little small things, right, this big green was taken.
Yeah, dollars on, what area, all. Like, what they're on that.
Yeah, we've been, we've been discussing that, Don, and what to do, and I'm going to Billy's advice on what to do about that. That's good. Uh, what, what do y'all think about backup, you know, we pass it around, pass it down this way, look at these used garbage trucks. Hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars used garbage truck, this larger truck, we have now ten-wheeler, and, uh, the mileage is low for the diesel engine. And these are, are coming from the dealer, be in excellent shape, you see the paint job on them and all, look like new. A hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, we can, we need to declare our old oh-five surplus property, and he said we should be able to get fifty to sixty thousand out of it. So let's say we don't get the fifty, we're going about sixty-five thousand dollars for a truck. And we can get a real cheap loan from the Georgia Municipal Association, and pay for, like Harrison said, by the month. And, uh, that way, we won't, we won't go into our money and sanitation and show a negative. They said it was better to pay for it by the month, and show that we, you know, we still making money.
Did you offer that kind of money on the trade in, or is that a trade sale that the city would make?
That's a great sale, the city would make. Uh, the last one, we put on the internet, and, uh, in fact, what was the chief's name? Don, he put it on there for us, uh, way back ago. The chief, what's his card now? PJ, PJ put it on internet and got thirty-five thousand dollars out, out of our last one in oh-five. It sold like that, and that man said, if we ever had that same truck again calling, I don't want to tell them no lie, I just want to put it out there. It's in good shape right now, it's working fine. It's working fine, doing good. So what, what do y'all want to do? He, he's got a motion, you said you made a motion?
I made a motion, a hundred and fifteen, that'd be a nice truck.
Don, you can get to see trucks down there? You get to see the trucks, the picture of the trucks? Okay, y'all saw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it, you got a warranty on everything, or did it just?
Sir?
Or did you got a warranty, the dealer gives you that kind of money, or did you just flat out?
It's supposed to be working, everything's supposed to be, be doing good. Now, I don't know, he ain't saying that.
Uh, there's only a warranty on the new ones, or the demo ones. He said the used ones were delivered here at the end.
I would, I would like to.
Go to see them back there?
Go see them, carry a billion mail, let them run and work.
Before you spend a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's what we did before, when we spent twenty-six, twenty-six thousand dollars. I just have to name it, find another twenty-six thousand dollars deal.
Yeah, these are not reconditioned garbage trucks, these are used garbage trucks.
They're used garbage trucks, they've been painted and gone over, so.
I like the idea of going and seeing them.
Yes.
And also, will the mayor have an offer on the old truck at all, or do you straight sell them all? That's been debated.
He, he had said we, we'd do better to just straight sell them, but I'll ask him, and I can call him, meet him back, and find out all this information, but I didn't want to do nothing before y'all, you know, said proceed and, and look into it, and we'll go to the bay, and we'll make a trip, and look at these, and I'll call him, and we'll come back on. How about that? That's it? Okay? So I like the bread, I had to buy something, I pitched it. I like the sweet.
Those are the best, the seventy thousand, five, I think it's used a lot, I put it something down in garbage cans, that.
Yeah.
All that.
Mayor, thirty yards, what, how many yards, Don?
Thirty, one, one that I like here.
And it, and it take up everything in the city at one time.
All right, that will cut a trip out.
Yes.
Over there. And it also give us that man, have him mow. So he helps you, what, a day and a half, now that?
Well, he pick up, he can probably, two and a half days, he can pick up the oil.
And that, that, Jimmy can have a few, the other two can have, Jimmy sweeps streets too.
Yeah, so. Well, that's one thing we need, getting the autonomy, you know, when he works on the, the old truck, god damn, he really ain't got all that much time. Go over there, uh, Friday morning, twelve o'clock, he goes sweep streets. This truck, you know, you have all the streets swept in the morning, you know? But that, that thirty-one yard pickup, that'll take you in one trip, so.
Alright. Well, I'll call, see what we can set up, see what your schedule is, our assembly month, and what that, and, and take a look at these trucks. And come back, and I'll call him, meet him, and tell you what we find out, on the circle. Okay? Uh, number eight, I have a motion that we pay the accounts that's listed.
So move.
Any discussion on any of the accounts or the bills? You know, when you take it home, and you find one, just call Diane, if you got any questions, always.
Mayor?
Uh, I have, first, go ahead.
I, I have a question, um, I'm like, to the name, uh, she, recently we been having some, some little boys, who were trying to break in, people homes. And, and, and it happened to, my lady in front, about three times. And I think it was, uh, not a good life, and tried to break in. Boy, then you can shoot it, and, and they called y'all later, because by the time they get down there, they'd be gone anyway, so.
Well, I'm not wanting anybody coming in my house while I'm there.
But let me tell you more, uh, well, this time she heard, and she called over to the house, and took the lights on, and all, you know, see that? But she, uh, but she saw, she saw he was trying to get in the back, running. And, but the first time they counted on, like, somebody came by, that Sunday morning, that's when she found out somebody was, trying to get in her. So she thought she heard, so, but she was hanging asleep, and it didn't take her, but when she got there, she wanted to, she purported, you know, she saw where they had, uh, tried to get in the one, the one, the one up there high, and then in the front there, and she got the lights on. And, uh, and where they, where all the dangers. And, but what, what they got done? He just, and they looked the window down, he didn't take no fingerprint. And, and there was a chill in the back, where they tried to get in the, in the bathroom. And, uh, and, you know, just made no prints, so I asked, I'm like, why he didn't take, he didn't take no fingerprint? She said, no, he just, we'll tell them. Do y'all have anything to, to tell about that, Chris?
Yes, yes ma'am, we do have, have fingerprint kids, take fingerprint, there's certain things that officers looks at. Some things you can't get prints off of that would work, and some things you can't. And some of them officers know that, I mean, it, it looks a lot easier on the TV than it is in real life.
Well, exactly, when she called, my husband, oh, you got the whole lot, you know?
She should always, oh. I mean, well, she may catch him, it could happen around then, they may catch him out walking around.
But this time, I'm about to picture it. But if we wise, if they were riding along, they should, oh, on the water, just can't shoot, from, from that time on, to the least, by the time you think I was going to be.
They can do a lot of circling around Martin Luther King in Washington, took a little, a lot of pictures, and it doesn't go.
Okay, I have a first and a second on the floor to pay the accounts, all in favor, say aye, please. Okay, likewise. One thing I would like to point out in your package to you, that, uh, that I personally am proud of. The state came here and inspected our dog facilities. They came up to city hall and asked our city clerk, and I see your records. She pulled them open, filed canyon, and the man said everything was people, he liked it. Everything's being done right with our dogs. And we say, ah, money doing it like we're doing it. And I, it's like I've talked to most of you, I might have missed somebody else. Nate's gonna come back and help us a little bit, part-time, and he's on social security, reading meters, and that's gonna free DJ up, catching dogs and all, so, give him a little bit of help, and I'll just be a part-time employee. Reading meters and turning meters off, and doing a vacancy list during the month, but, uh, I'm real proud of the job DJ's doing with the dogs, and Chief, you have said to me that he's done a good job. Every time you call him, he comes, he's catching. Is that great, I don't put words in your mouth, what you're talking about.
No, he's, he's catching. Never come back. And he's never failed to come on, I'll go.
Okay, that's good, that's good. Okay, I want to bring that to your attention, if it wasn't on there. Alright, number nine, I have a motion, we go in executive session, discuss the property.
So move.
Do you have a motion to go back in the regular session?
So move.
Okay, no action is taken at all, do I have a motion to be adjourned?
So move.
Second, all in favor, say aye? Good meeting, appreciate you coming.